We'll rise for the flag, so please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all." Now, on the roll call, Claudia?
Yeah.
Alan?
Here.
John?
Here.
Tracy Allen?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
And Al?
Here.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies in which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having a date, time, and place thereof sent to the record, the Town News, and/or Star Ledger newspapers, the constituent borough clerks and borough libraries, as well as posting in the school district's principals' offices, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere on school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to fine not to exceed $100.
Okay, thank you, Tom. I'll read the mission statement tonight. The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his or her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and other, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed New Jersey student learning standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum content standards. We'll move into the public comment segment on agenda items only.
Did we do a roll call? We did. Thank you.
There will be time at the end of the meeting to discuss any other Riverdale business. So, Mark, do we have any public comments on agenda items at all?
Any comments? Raise your hand or leave a comment, please. Looks like we have nothing.
I'm actually just gonna make a request, Al.
Yeah.
Is if people could mute until they're actually speaking, because whoever's shuffling papers is really difficult. You can hear that more than anything else.
That's a great idea. If everybody would just mute until you want to speak, thanks. There are no presentations tonight, so we'll jump into the student member report. I think I did see Jessie. Noel and Josh are all here tonight.
Noel can't be here this evening. She reached out to me.
Okay. Jessie, you out there? You have anything for us tonight?
Yeah, just, most of us are looking forward to kind of after the break, like, maybe getting back into the regular flow of things, like, after being shut down this week. So, kind of a little bit positive more than normal.
Very good. Okay, how about Josh? You out there, Josh?
Yeah, I'm here. On Saturday, the Quiz Bowl team had their second competition of the year, and it's their second real competition, because the club was founded last year, and they did go, we did go to a novice tournament, but we never went to, like, a real tournament because of COVID. So, one of the, both teams did pretty well. I think one of the teams placed, I think, in the top 10. I'm not entirely sure. And it was just a fun day. We, like, did all virtually, and it was from, like, 9:00 to, like, 5:30. So, it was, like, a long day, but it was worth it.
I didn't catch what team that was, Josh.
Oh, Quiz Bowl, so, like, academic competition.
Good. Very good. Okay. My report tonight is short as well. I'm gonna just request the board to get online and complete the CSA evaluation. There was an email, I believe, March 7th, from Matt Lee. So, check out your emails, and let's get that done. You know, it takes about 30 minutes to complete, depending how detailed you want to get with it. I timed mine, it was about 30, 35 minutes. So, let's get these completed so that we can move on to the next part of this process. That's all I have tonight, Patrick. All yours.
Thank you. My report is also somewhat brief. The first thing I'd like to do is just point out a correction on the agenda from our last board meeting, March 29th. So, if you see tonight on, under Finance, item numbers 13A, B, D, and F, we refer to the February reports. That is accurate, but at our previous meeting, we had February there. That should have been said January. So, I'm telling you to know that, so that when we get our minutes, we'll correct it in the minutes appropriately for coming forward. So, this agenda is accurate. The last agenda just had the wrong month listed. That aside, start off with the good news. I'd like to congratulate Paige Riley, one of our seniors who was selected by the Bergen County School Boards Association to be part of the 2021 Unsung Heroes Program. This is a program that they put forward that recognizes students who distinguish themselves and, in unique ways, model good citizenship, and show quiet strength that inspires others in the spirit of volunteerism. And this is for Paige's efforts through the Best Buddies Program. So, congratulations to Paige as we go along the way. The, as Josh, I think it was Josh mentioned, you know, we are still in the throes, unfortunately, of this pandemic. We need to understand that while we are witnessing across the country, and even to some degree in the state of New Jersey, that restrictions, mitigation techniques, et cetera, are being lifted or relaxed. Our area, in particular, is experiencing a very high rate of community transmission. Our school was affected by that here at the high school, because we have, we had an exposure in the school that took out several faculty, but we also had several community transmissions. What I mean by that is a child of a faculty member gets sick, a spouse of a family member gets sick, et cetera. While we haven't had much transmission or any documented transmission from one person to another inside the school, we have all of our instances where people are bringing the issue, or bringing the virus into the building. I think the reason that we haven't had many exposures, many transmissions in the school building is because our protocols are good, and we do strictly enforce the protocols put forward by the Department of Health. The CDC has been releasing revised guidance, but New Jersey Department of Health's guidance is often more strict than what the CDC puts forward. And I remind everybody that we are and remain in an orange zone, which is a very high risk, this is a high-risk, I'm sorry, zone. Red would be very high risk. Tomorrow, I'm reminding people about the upcoming break and travel. I'll be sending a letter home to the community. I just want to say it out here at the public that if you travel, you are required by Jersey to quarantine for 10 days upon, from the date of your return. The only way you can shorten that to seven days is if you test prior to your travel and five days after your travel. And that'll be in my, in the letter home to the community. You need to produce both tests. They both need to be negative, and then quarantine can be shortened to seven days. So, we have had three additional exposures over the last weekend, which are closing a couple different sections of our athletics program. The last one was today. So, I have to caution everybody, remind everybody that the, that the virus is still out there. It's moving throughout our communities. And if you follow, as I do, the reports that come out weekly from the Department of Health called the COVID Activity Index, New Jersey, who, that was moving steadily to the yellow, is now moving steadily to the orange. So, we still have a very high rate of community transmission that we need to continue to pay attention to. However, we are still trying to bring more students back into the building, and as I mentioned at our last meeting, we are, the institute are process of selecting all students that have IEPs in a stratified approach, all students that have I-504s, and all students that have I and RS plans. We've worked our way through that, and we're now looking at ways to bring back general education students into the facility. We've had our, our architect is currently examining social distancing guidelines as they fluctuate to determine what our capacities could be in each of the individual classrooms. And tomorrow, Mr. Pepe will be releasing a letter to the class of 2021 and their parents to determine what their interest would be to bring all seniors back into the building for the fourth marking period. So, that will go out to everybody tomorrow. And hopefully, we'll get a good read on what that will mean for us as to whether or not we will then be able to expand it to other grade levels. And then finally, I just want to remind everybody that Wednesday is a one-session day for students. Students in the middle school will report to the school in the morning for their, with the cohort that's scheduled for Wednesday. Of course, the high school is now virtual. All of our staff will be participating in an after-school, or an afternoon and later in the day workshop on addressing and dealing with race in the classroom. So, we're bringing in, I guess, Speaker Matthew Kay to work with our staff to be able to sensitively address those issues going forward. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Let's get into the committee reports. I know that our schedules are now set, so we have had some of these committees meeting. Joe, anything with budget and finance?
No, Al, we have not met since last report. The only thing I would report, and I think Tom can tell us, is the, I believe it's next meeting, we actually vote on the final budget. Am I correct, Tom, on that?
Absolutely. We did get approval from the county office for our budget. There was no corrections, no revisions, nothing that they were seeking, so that's a very good sign. And on April 26th, we'll present the final budget to the community.
Perfect. Thanks, Tom. That concludes, Tom, and my report.
Okay. Doug, facilities and security?
We did not meet, but we're planning to meet within the next two weeks to review the security report that was received from the consultant and work on next steps.
Very good. John, Community Relations and Technology Committee?
We did meet recently. We discussed how best to get the budget information out to the community, so there'll be a newsletter that'll go out. Administration will work on that. We did re-review what else we can do in a virtual classroom environment. We're doing well, and things are getting better, and various other topics.
And, John, if I could, just to add in, we anticipate having a draft of that newsletter created this week so that we could get it printed, so that it could go out after break and in time for that April meeting.
Perfect. Okay. Claudia, curriculum?
We haven't had a meeting since our last board meeting.
Okay. And lastly, policy and governance.
Tonight, there are first readings of several, several new policies and a redo of the dress code policy, and, but I always forget what the, what the, what the R stands for. Want to call it requisition, but that's not it.
Regulation.
Regulation, thank you. And the, that regulation. So, anyone can, you know, ask questions. We can make alterations if needed between now and the second reading, and then at the second reading at our next meeting, the public, we invite you to make any comments they might have.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, let's jump into the consent agenda. May I have a motion for consent?
I'll move. Doug?
I'll second, Claudia.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or issues with the consent agenda? Okay. Tom, when you're ready, please?
Claudia?
Yeah.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
And Al?
Yes.
Okay. The first vote is what Stephanie had just mentioned. Under 12 miscellaneous A, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the first reading of the following policies. 3,000 series, 35, 114.1, school furnished electronic device distribution and use. The 5,000 series, 5132, dress and grooming. 5141.5, mental health and emotional well-being. And 5141.7, social and emotional learning and character education. Does anybody have any questions? This is the first reading. So, if not, we'll hop into a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Stephanie and Claudia, thank you. Tom, when you're ready, please?
Claudia?
Yeah.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yeah.
And Al?
Yes. The second vote, under 13 Finance District Operation D, the superintendent, at the request of the board secretary, recommends that the board accept line item transfers and the adjustments as listed in the financial report for the month ending February 2021. May I have a motion, please?
This is Joe. I'll make that motion, Al.
Thank you, Joe.
I'll second it, Al.
Okay, Alan, thank you. Tom, when you're ready?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. We have an addendum to the regular agenda. Under 13 Finance and District Operation, letter I, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Riverdale Regional School District and the County of Bergen hereby approve the submission of the following other capital project to the Department of Education for review and approval and for amendment to the long-range facilities plan. It is further understood that the district is not seeking funding at the current time for this project. The project is the, to secure vestibule upgrades.
And if I could, we, we should just add Riverdale Middle School to that list. We have Riverdale High School and Riverdale Middle School. It's the same project, same issue, but we're doing vestibules in both locations.
Both buildings, okay. So...
I'll make that motion, Al.
Okay, Joe, thank you.
I'll second.
Stephanie?
And as far as discussion, Al, can I just add that, you know, this was, this is part of the budget before. This is really just putting it on the, on the long-range plan. This is something we talked about before with the, I don't say preliminary budget, but the initial budget. This was already included in that capital outlay. So, this is nothing new. It's just where it's being placed.
Very good. Thank you, Joe.
Al, real quick, I know Doug was saying that they're gonna have a meeting within the next two weeks about the security. I guess what was done for us, the security, what did you call it? I didn't, thank you, I couldn't remember the word. Is that gonna affect this, or could it affect this?
They're working together.
They are.
So, that the ability to integrate whatever's going on here to a regular system is anticipated.
Okay, it is, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, Tom, please?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie? Stephanie?
All right, yes.
And Al?
Yes.
Okay, let's jump into old business, new business? Anybody have anything? Okay. Board discussion. On the agenda, we have the middle school principal vacancy. Patrick?
So, as we've discussed, Mr. Friedman has submitted his retirement. He'll be leaving us at the end of August in the summertime. We just went through a screening process for the selection of the high school principal. We discussed in our curriculum, I'm sorry, in our Community Relations Committee, if you will, redoing that same type of process for the middle school. I wanted to bring it to the board, because if the board is okay with us moving forward, and I'll go over it once again with everybody, then we would begin the advertising for the, for the position, and then we would work towards concluding that process so that there would be some overlap with the individuals. I would advertise the position for effective July 1st, but depending on when we complete the hiring process and what certain individuals would have in their exit clauses, if they come from outside the school district, may impact, you know, that that could be later. It could be July 15th, could be August 1st, that kind of a thing. But we certainly want to provide the opportunity for overlap, and I think we also want to provide the opportunity for, leading us up to reopening the schools in September and have that person be here as much as they possibly can. So, to go over that, what happened is, in the past, is we had a paper screening process that consisted of the superintendent, one other administrator, and three board members. We would review all of the paper resumes that came in. They come in electronically, but I'm still using the term paper. And then we would select a number of individuals, could be 10 to 12, that would move on to a screening interview. The screening interview would be with the superintendent and two different administrators. It would be similar, I used the phrase before of speed dating, where you move through the process to try to get everybody an opportunity to at least see them. Then we would move to an interview panel with two teachers, two parents, two administrators, different administrators, and three board members, and they would be different board members than the ones who took part in the paper screen. And then from there, they would recommend two or three candidates to come to the board for a final interview, which would take place in executive session. If we move relatively quickly, I think we could conclude the first two steps by around April 20th, maybe April 27th, then we would be in a place where we could schedule executive sessions of the board for the first week or two or three of May, so that the board could conclude the process and bring something forward. I mean, if we really were able to follow the timeline, we might even be able to execute everything by around the 10th of May, which is the second board meeting in May. So, unless there's some modification to that, that's the direction, I think, that we would be moving in, and I would then begin the advertising process this week, so that it would hit the paper. Now, obviously, we have the break coming up, and it's Easter weekend, and the conclusion of Passover, so we would keep the advertisement open for at least two weeks, so people would have the opportunity to know about it, see about it, and apply for it. So, unless there's discussion, Mr. President, that's the direction that we'll move.
I think everybody's good with that. It seemed to work for the high school, so, okay. That works for us. Alan, Joe, everybody, Barbara? You all good with that process?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
So, that's, that's a go.
So, Al, in the next few days, you'll set up those two groups?
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Okay. I guess we can move into public comments. So, if the public has a comment, question, on anything to do with the Riverdale School District, please raise your hand or type in a question, state your name and the time from which you come from. You have a three-minute limit, and Mark will moderate this section, so, Mark?
Yes, we already have a raised hand. That's Ms. De La Cruz. You can unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I have two quick questions. I am, my child is in Riverdale Middle School. First question, what is the 3,000 series, 5,000 series? What is, what is that about? I'm a little lost with that. And, I think CARES Act, I think we're expecting some money to come to the states or qualifications. Do we have any plans on where that funding is gonna go to the schools?
Sure. So, your first question regarding our policy manual, so are, we have a series of policies that are arranged by numerically. We have the 1,000 series, which is the superintendent, what governs my ability to operate, and we have the 200 series, which deals with the public, the 300 series, which deals with the business area, 4,000, which deals with staff, 5,000, which deals with students, 6,000, which deals with curriculum instruction, 7,000 is construction, 8,000 is reserved, and 9,000 is the board bylaws. So, it's available online. If you go to riverdale.org, at the top, under the board, you select the board, and you'd be able to access our policy manual. So, 3,000 series, 5,000 series is just a way of organizing policies so that we know what the general reference is.
Oh, okay. I thought there were changes being made to the policies. Okay.
Yeah, well, there, there are changes, but, so, for instance, the 3,000 series, that's a new policy. We didn't necessarily have one that governed distributing our computers to the staff and students. What we had is the acceptable use policy. So, we're expanding it so that we have a clearer definition of what that is, and it's made necessary because so many districts moved from in-person learning to remote learning and distribution of computers, you know, since last March, a year ago, March. And again, they're available on our website, and of course, if, you know, you have questions about a specific policy, you can always reference them to my office. And I apologize, I forgot what the second question was.
That's okay. The second question was regarding the CARES Act. I know there's...
Yes. Right, so, we're right now exploring that. Mr. Bonfiglio, who's our business official, and I are working together with our architect, as well as some other individuals in the school district, to determine how we could best utilize those funds. It's gonna come to us in three buckets. One bucket will be for building improvements, one bucket will be for student learning, and one bucket will be for mental health. And the largest bucket that Riverdale will receive will be for building improvements. So, we're still in the process of dealing with that. The deadline, I believe, for submission, that is around May 15th. The deadline, I believe, for submission, that is around May 15th.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any more questions or comments? Looks like we're done.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay, good mark. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna move back into executive. Joe, do I need a motion for that?
Yeah, we should. We should, I'd like to make a motion to go into an executive session, and when we come out, and when we come, and we will come out of executive, and no actions will be taken when we come out.
Okay. Very good.
Great. If I could just clarify even further, we were going in to discuss a personnel item. The board will take, again, as Joe said, no action, and the only thing that will happen when we return, the public, is to adjourn the meeting formally.
Okay.
I'll second all of that.
Thank you. Then I would actually like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting to go into executive, which I think is what I meant to say the first time.
You did.
Yeah.
Thank you. See you there.
Bye, guys.
Bye, guys.